All right, let's go to item 3B, approval of a resolution recognizing Ricky Smith's retirement. Where's Ricky at? Oh, there you are. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
It's good to see you again. I just saw you the other day at the courthouse. So Ricky, thank you for being here, and I know you've got some folks from your department here as well, and we'll let them extend some greetings as well. So this is a resolution honoring Ricky Smith for 21 years of service to Denton County. The Denton County Commissioners Court, Denton County, Texas, during a regular session on the 25th day of February 2025, considered the following resolution. Rick Smith, deputy sheriff, has been a loyal employee with the Denton County Sheriff's Office since December the 1st, 2003, and retire on February the 28th, 2025, after over 21 years of service to Denton County. And with his previous tenure at the Lewisville Police Department, will have over 50 years of dedicated law enforcement service. Let's give him a clap on that right there. Deputy Rick Smith has been serving the county court at law number two, court as bailiff, and for years has been a steady hand and watchful eye that ensured the safety, efficiency, and dignity of this court. His commitment to justice has left an indelible mark on the proceedings within these walls and the hearts of those privileged to work alongside him. His kindness, leadership, and steadfast presence has not only upheld the honor of this institution, but have cultivated a spirit of camaraderie and respect among all of those along his journey. Whereas the staff of the county court at law number two proudly and wholeheartedly express its deepest appreciation and admiration for Deputy Rick Smith, a man whose dedication, professionalism, and unwavering integrity has set the gold standards for what it means to serve as bailiff. Whereas without hesitation or reservation, the staff of county court at law number two unanimously declares that Deputy Rick Smith has been and always will be the finest bailiff any court could ever ask for. His impact is immeasurable, his presence irreplaceable, and his legacy undeniable. Whereas as he embarks on this well-earned new chapter, we extend our deepest gratitude for his outstanding service, unwavering dedication, and profound impact on our court and our lives. And we wish him a future filled with joy, fulfillment, and every happiness that retirement has to offer. With respect, admiration, and the utmost appreciation, thank you, Deputy Rick Smith. And now therefore, be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court of Denton County, Texas, does hereby extend to Deputy Rick Smith our sincere and grateful appreciation for his dedicated service to Denton County. We congratulate Rick on his well-earned retirement and extend our best wishes to him for continued success, happiness, and good health in the years to come. Done in open court, this is the 25th day of February 2025, upon a motion made by... Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? Well, I just want to echo everything in that very beautiful resolution. I know that that was heartfelt by your colleagues that worked beside you and know you the best. And so I also want to thank you for your many decades of service to the public and for law enforcement. And so thank you, thank you for all that you've done. And I do believe we have the sheriff here as well who would like to say something. I know Judge Ramirez is here, and I'm sure that the judge would like to speak as well. Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning. Think about 50 years.
I know.
Of doing something. Commissioner Mitchell was a small child. And just think about that.
I can't think about that.
Kindergarten, right? And it's remarkable, first of all, that he's unscathed physically. Not sure about mentally. But it takes a toll on an individual to do anything for that amount of time, and especially law enforcement.
That's right.
And the things that family goes through. Of those 50 years, I've had the privilege and the honor of knowing Rick for about 25 or 26 of those years when he served with Lewisville. And he has been, you know, he's one of those guys that, I don't want you to take this the wrong way, that you don't think about a lot because you know the job's being taken care of. That's the reason. Because we've had many conversations with Judge Ramirez, and when the most important thing in the bailiff arena is the relationship they have with their judge and with the court as a whole. And it's sometimes it doesn't work. And but this has worked for a long time. And I've always heard nothing but accolades from Judge Ramirez and his staff. And that makes me extremely proud to have Rick as an employee and as a friend. And Rick, I wish you the best of luck and a happy retirement because you definitely deserve it. And it just, I'm old, and I've only been doing this for 37 years. So you're really old. And it's, when you make it, I can't emphasize enough that that's, that doesn't happen very often in this profession. You have, you know, we have a high burnout rate. We have all the negative things that you can think of. Law enforcement unfortunately is on that spectrum. And to have had not only a career for 50 years, but a productive, integrity-filled, great career is almost unheard of. So I just want to make sure that people in this room and the court recognizes the difficulty that that has been. And Rick has led with integrity. And that's all you can ask of anyone. And I just, I want to thank him for his service and for his friendship. And I'm sure Judge Ramirez, you'd like to come up and say...
Yes, he is.
A few words.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
And Judge, I'd just like to say on behalf of the city of Lewisville, I also want to thank you for your service there and here in Denton County. You never had to arrest me, so I think you're pretty good. Thank you.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. First, I want to just make sure everyone knows, Rick also served for another judge. He served for Judge Margaret Barnes before she was elevated to the 367th District Court. I think I said that right. And I can guarantee you, I promise you, she felt the exact same way. And it was one of the sadder days for her when she left to the 367th and didn't take you. You decided you wanted to stay in county court at law number two. It was one of the better days for me because I got to keep you in our court. And this is your day, not my day. And Rick, I could sit up here and say a lot of words, but I think it all comes down to this. You have been the absolute best bailiff in the state of Texas, hands down, period, all these years. And I am honored to have gotten to be able to know you, to serve with you, and to call you my friend. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Smith. This is your, this is your opportunity.
Well, I told Chief Lee a little while ago that I'd rather go in a dark building at night by myself and hunt for a burglar than I had to talk in front of a group of people.
We're a friendly crowd.
I guess one thing sums it up for a whole career is I always think of something a coworker said. He said, "Where else can you work? They give you clothes to wear, they give you a new car to drive, and tell you to go out and look for trouble." And I'd have to say, it's been quite a party.
That's great.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Well, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of this well-deserved resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, let's go to item 3C, a presentation by Marathon Health to review the progress and engagement of the My Family Health Clinic. And we have, our team from HR is here. So good morning, Julie.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. On behalf of Gustavo and our HR team, particularly Melody, our benefits manager, and Tony, our health and wellness coordinator, we are pleased to introduce Marathon representatives that have come to share with you today. We have Heather Klubertons, who is the group director of West Operations, and Jeremy Roth, who is the regional operations manager.
Perfect. Well, good morning.
Good morning, folks.
Thank y'all for being here.
Yes, thank you. Okay, sorry.
You're all good. You're all good.
All right. Well, thank you all so much for inviting us to the Denton County Commissioners Court. We're happy to be here. And I would like to put on the record that we're both Texans by birth, and we live in Frisco, so we're local.
Love it.
So we're very happy to be here today to provide an update on the My Family Clinic. And if you have any questions, feel free to ask. We'll also pause at the end to see if there's any additional questions. But we wanted to start with our partnership highlights for the last three years. So since Go Live, we had over 6,578 visits to the health center. Of those visits, we had 1,582 unique patients. So I think of that as unique belly buttons in the health center. For our engagement at the bottom, we've actually seen an increase over last year. So we define engagement as anybody that's been into the health center within the last 18 months to have a visit. But when we talk about engagement in particular, we're looking at provider engagement. So things like the labs, we're not counting, and the information that we're providing you today. We do have benchmarks at the bottom, but those are including all visits. So those wouldn't be taking out the provider visits. Our other municipalities are a collection of about 45 other clients across the nation, about 40,000 eligible lives. So that's what our benchmark is. The number in the middle is our plan information. So when we look at our engaged members versus non-engaged members, those members that are engaging with the health center cost your plan about 25% less than those that are not engaged with the health center. So the raw data for last year was those non-engaged members were about 7,500 in cost. And then those engaged members were $5,600. Next to that is patient satisfaction. So that's what the members are telling us about their visit to the health center. So we're at 99.3%. So we're up versus last year. And we are higher than the government benchmark for that. So that's just our patients telling us that they like their visit at the health center, and they would recommend the health center to their family and friends. This slide has a lot of, a lot of information on it, but basically I just want to highlight some of the things that we've done in the last year. We have hired a mental health provider. So she was hired last September. And then we also have Girdish that came on board as our nurse practitioner. She replaced Chris Kyle, who retired. And we've just done a lot of things with Tony. Tony's been a great partner through all of this. So we've had lunch and learn presentations. We've had book clubs that we've had. We've also had our providers work and be part of the new hire presentations as well. And there's a host of other things on here as well. But just to highlight that we are involved with the Denton County community, and we really are always looking for innovative ways to increase employee engagement and get more people into the health center or meet people where they're at. So this is a busy slide as well, but I just want to highlight a few things. We have the last two years of our volume trend. So this is going to be all of our visits. It's going to include acute visits, which would be somebody coming in saying, "I just don't feel well." They may have a cold or the flu. Those lab visits, which would be somebody coming in to maybe get a vaccine, or also coming in to get some regular lab work done. And then those preventative visits, which would be things like health coaching, maybe working with someone that has a chronic condition in the health center, or doing those yearly annual physicals. So those are going to be all a longer appointment type. We did show a couple decreases last year, but we also had an increase in our provider visit, which is really encouraging to see. I know that Girdish has done a really fantastic job of connecting with the members that have come in, and then also getting out into the Denton County community as well. The next slide is mental health highlights. And I know that our mental health provider came on board in September of last year. Prior to that, we had a couple of mental health providers that were in the DFW area that were backfilling, but they weren't always there consistently. And I'm sure for most of those in the audience that have had an experience with a mental health provider, it's really important to have a consistent person that you can go to and build that relationship with so you can be open with them. So we really wanted to make sure that we found the right person that could be there for the Denton County population. And we know that Chris is that person. So she's been doing a lot of different things to engage with the community, meet different people. And we continue to see increased engagement and utilization of her services since she started with us. All right. So this next slide is engagement, and this is just looking at provider engagement. So it's not including anything lab-related. So those biometrics again are like maybe vaccines that somebody would come in for. So we can see year over year, just looking at the left-hand side, this is going to be all engagement. Our employee group had an increase year over year. And then our spouse and dependent group stayed flat, but the numbers went up a little of individuals that came into the health center and engaged with us. Retirees, we had an increase there as well. And we can see the benchmark at the bottom as well. To the right is going to be our high-end chronic group. So that's going to be anybody that has been diagnosed either through claims data or at the health center with having a chronic condition or high biometric risk. So we can see our employee, spouse, and retiree groups as well. We saw some increases in spouse and the retiree group for the last year. So this is engagement by department. And we really focused last year, and we're focusing this year, on making sure that we engage with those departments where maybe they don't see us as often, or maybe they have work schedules that may not be conducive to them coming into the health center. So we've really been working with different departments to make sure that they know about the services offered at the health center, and also in some cases, you know, engage with them directly either through providing them information about the health center or going on-site to do specific activities with them as well. And we did see our largest increase between year two and year three in our tax assessor, collector, juvenile detention, and operations departments. And then public health had the largest increase with over six points.
The tax assessor, collect...
Yes.
Juvenile, and what was the other one?
It went operations. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. And this is looking at our employees and our retiree group. So it's taking out our spouses and our dependents. So this next slide is just biometric improvement. So it's looking at our employees, spouses, and retirees that have had at least two readings. And we look at two readings, so we're looking at improvement over time for the last 24 months. So these are individuals that have had those lab screenings where we've checked certain things. And 80% of members have made progress on those at-risk biometrics. So it doesn't necessarily mean that I went from having a chronic condition to not having one, but it does mean that I did make positive improvement in that chronic condition. So I may not be at risk as high as I was. And I would like to note BMI, the average change was negative point or 2.0. And that's a significant loss in weight. And that really improves quality of life, so it's nice to see that. Another area where we saw some really good improvement was with cholesterol. So I remember the H because it's happy, it's the good one. So we want to see those numbers go up. And we had a 9.2 increase, so that's good. And then LDL cholesterol, the lousy cholesterol, go down. So it's good to see those increases too. These are a couple patient success stories. I'm not sure if we have time to read them, but I'll read one of them. So these are from some of the members that have been to the health center. We have a few around mental health. And then we have one just around Teresa. She's 59, and she's been going to many doctors because she had a lot of aches and pains. No one really listened to her. They kind of dismissed her pain, which sometimes that happens unfortunately. She did stop by the health center, and she actually was put on some medication and had regular follow-ups with our provider, Girdish. And she started feeling so much better, you know, when she had this follow-up visit. She was just crying because she just felt like her quality of life was better. She was able to be a better person at home and at work. And it really made a huge impact on our quality of life. And I'm going to let Jeremy cover the next couple of slides.
All right. So just, I'll keep it, I'll keep it brief as far as this is concerned. So as discussed, we're over 99% on patient satisfaction collectively across the board. Something I do want to call attention to is that our completion rate is at 14% for the surveys. So the more raw data we get, the more actionable data we get, the better we're able to tailor our approach and continue to serve your teammates, your employees, your cohort. Since the addition of the two new providers, everything has leveled out in a phenomenal way. We're at 98.9 as far as the, you know, people getting in at their preferred time. So accessibility is there. Generally speaking, there are a couple outliers as far as some of the shifts that we have with juvenile detention, et cetera, that Tony and Marathon are both working on. Time and waiting room, 97.1% are thrilled with that. So we're able to get patients back. We're able to get them in, we're able to get them back. 100% on provider wait time. Girdish is maniacal in her focus as far as getting in there and getting the patients taken care of. Better quality care, if you're curious about that, that's a comparative element to the care that they would receive in and outside just in the regular world. So 86.2, that's phenomenal. Satisfaction rate across the board, again, as we mentioned on the first slide, 99.3. The net promoter score is just the collective rating for satisfaction by our patients. So this breaks it down a little bit more. Again, this is kind of a busy slide, but you can see the increase year over year. We're at 99.3. Year one, we were at 97. Year two, we were at 99.1, and this year we're at 99.3. So it just keeps increasing. And again, I can't speak enough to the focus of Tony and her team, to Girdish, our provider, and the clinical team at the center. They've done a phenomenal job. I think we're definitely in the right place and moving forward like crazy. Survey completion rate, again, 15 is kind of a loose benchmark on that. We're at 14. But with this being year three, most people are not going to complete surveys with the frequency that they would in year one. So 14%, I'm super proud of. I will tell you that across my cohort, I'm at about 6%, and they're at 14%. So the patients are engaged in their well-being, and in the center, they're invested in it. And I love to see that. Down to the bottom, better quality care, we're relatively flat. Provider wait time, we're flat at 100%. Schedule preferred time, relatively flat. But again, when I say flat, that's still at roughly a 99% rating. And the wait time is right there at 97%. So I'm super proud of how efficient the team is, how they serve your teams, and how they serve your people. And yeah, I'm just excited to see what comes from this point.
Okay, well, that's the end of our presentation. One other thing I would note about MPS is typically in the community, the average MPS score is like between a 30 to 40 in healthcare. So having, you know, a 99% rating is extremely favorable and really good. So it's great. So I'm happy to answer any questions that the group has.
I want to thank y'all for having a clear outline of the measurables as it relates to this...
Yes, sir.
...this service. And I think it's just part of our overall efforts to have Denton County be an attractive place to call your work home. And I think this is an exemplary service that you are providing as part of our overall benefits package. And I do believe that this will now and in the future continue to save Denton County tax dollars, you know, as we look to work to prevent things and not just treat them. And so I want to thank, I want to thank y'all for doing that. I want to thank Tony, her great job, our lunch and learns and all the different advocacy, and going out and setting up something new here, right, in the department. And I want to thank the overall, all of the HR department for embracing not only this, but just a mindset of wellness, you know, and as we create a culture of wellness here at the county. And I think this Marathon Health, this is one of our key partners. So I want to thank y'all. Does anyone have anything to add?
No, I really appreciate it and thank you for the information, the update. And a healthy employee is a productive employee and also obviously better at home as well. So we really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Have a good day.
You too. Thank you.
Good job.
Hope Ron Marchant is watching.
I'm going to call him. Yeah, Ron Marchant brought this to the court.
Who's that guy?
It was a great... Oh, I could reacquaint you. All right, let's go back to the beginning. Let's go to item two, which is our consent agenda. Members, are there any items you'd like to pull? Or do you have a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
A motion for approval by Commissioner Falcone or second by Commissioner Mitchell? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our consent agenda today consists of item 2A, which is approval of order-making appointments and any appropriate action. Item 2, item 2B is approval of payroll. Item 2C is approval of budget and request 100600 for public facilities construction management to transfer $900 from training and education to county promotion for additional funding for employee engagement event items. Item 2D is approval of budget and request 100620 for human resources transfer $170 for administrative supplies to county promotion for additional funding for employee engagement event, employee engagement event items. Already did our resolutions. Let's go to item 5A, approval of the bill report. Payments from CSCD, Community Corrections, TAIP, Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forfeiture, VIT interest, and DA forfeiture funds are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. May.
Thank you, Judge. I have one addition today to Health and Human Services Commission for $5,500.
Perfect. Thank you so much. All right, members, do we have a motion to adopt the amended bill report? Motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Second by Commissioner Falcone. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 6A, approval of the sales source renewal of the jury plus jury management system software maintenance agreement between Denton County and Jury Systems Incorporated, JSI.
Moved approved.
Do we have a motion by Commissioner Williams? Second by Commissioner Falcone. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 6B, approval of the renewal of the Rapid7 Insight VM and Insight Connection software from Solid Border Incorporated, amount of $98,488.38 through the Texas Department of Information Resources, DIR, Cooperative Contract, DIR, CPO 4850.
Moved approved.
Motion by Commissioner Falcone or second by Commissioner Mitchell? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 6C, approval of the contract with G2 General Contractors for the installation of the catwalk grates along the chillers of the Denton County Courts Building in the amount of $75,030.98 through the Texas Interlocal Purchasing System Tips Cooperative Contract 241001.
Moved approved.
Motion by Commissioner Williams. Second by Commissioner Falcone. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 6D, approval of the contract with Gomez Floor Covering Incorporated for the purchase and installation of new tile flooring for the Denton County Courts Building in the amount of $192,274.18 through the BioBoard Cooperative Contract 73624. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six C, approval of the purchase of ballistic and tactical gear for the sheriff's office from Art Vark in the amount of $84,045 for the General Services Administration, the GSA Cooperative Contract GS07F141DA. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six F, approval of the purchase of Critical Records Management Platte Imaging Services from CoFile Technologies Incorporated through the state of Texas, Texas Christmas Contract 2392001 in amount of $125,580. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six G, approval of award of ITB 242837 Nell Road Approach Widening to West Texas Rebar Placers Incorporated.
Moved approved.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six H, approval of the acknowledgement of notification regarding the merger and vendor name change of Structure Works LLC to Pave Beyond Corporation and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six I, approval to add John Polster ITS and Christina Trowl ITS as non-voting advisors to the existing evaluation committee of RFPQ 232767. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six J, approval to add John Polster ITS and Christina Trowl ITS as non-voting advisors to the existing evaluation committee for RFPQ 232768 Engineering Design Services. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, item seven A, report for miscellaneous equipment and software services presented for recording purposes only. Next is item six, seven B, is approval of the budget amendment request 100580 for public facilities construction management department to transfer $14,522 from the permanent improvement fund and unappropriated contingency to stony store restoration of fundamental materials testing and geotechnical services for the stony store restoration project. The chair move for approval, second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven C, approval of budget and request 100590 to increase revenues and account expenditures for the 2025 hotel occupancy tax, the HOT grant for supplies for archival preservation, contract labor, museum tourism promotion, historical exhibits and the stony store restoration for a total amount of $296,200. The chair move for approval.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item seven D, approval of budget and request 100610 for the county clerk to transfer $126,000 from the records management fund fund balance to records preservation fee, Microsoft expense to ensure high-quality images during the digitization of faint and illegible plats. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by the chair, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next to item seven E, approval of the budget and request 100630 for emergency management to roll over unspent community emergency response team cert, public education response trailer grant funds from the fiscal year 2024 to the fiscal year 2025 in the amount of $4,916. The chair move for approval. Second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item seven F, approval of budget and request 100640 for emergency management to roll over unspent urban area security initiative, special event trailer, camera trailer grant funds from the fiscal year 2024 to fiscal year 2025 in the amount of $168,000.
Moved approved.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, item seven G, approval of budget and request 100650 for emergency management to roll over unspent security area initiative, community response, response team, public education grant funds from the fiscal year 2024 to fiscal year 2025 in the amount of $45,923. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, item seven H, approval of the countywide organizational goals, budget calendar, budget process parameters and establishing budget priorities for the budget office for use when preparing to recommend a budget for the fiscal year 2026 and the appropriate action. We'll go ahead and hand it up to Alejandro.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Morning, sir.
Yes, as you all know, every February we come to court and discuss the proposed budget calendar dates for the upcoming budget process, as well as to go over some general guidelines for county departments really intended to assist them in preparing their budget requests. And so what you see here is the proposed budget calendar for the upcoming fiscal year process. We are proposing to open up the budget application so that departments can begin working on their initial requests on March 7th. Departments will have from March 7th until either April 7th or April 14th to submit those requests, depending on their own individual departmental deadline. And then our office will work from April 14th until some point in mid-July or early August to review those requests and develop our recommendations. July 25th is when the Denton Central Appraisal District releases their certified totals. And that's basically what gives us the information as to how much, approximately how much tax revenue we're going to be receiving. But even after that, the tax office still has to calculate their various tax rates. So they'll calculate things like the known revenue rates and the voter approval rates, which give you like the bottom and the ceiling of the tax rate. So with that information, then we'll be able to develop the tax rate necessary to be able to balance the budget. So we are proposing August 12th as the date in which we will present the recommended budget to Commissioners Court. That is a few weeks after when we presented it last year. And again, that's because we're going to wait until after the appraisal district releases their final numbers so that the recommended budget that we present will have the final tax rates as well as the final tax revenue. So last year it included preliminary values, so it included estimated tax revenues. But this year it will include those final numbers as part of the recommended budget. And then, of course, after the presentation, we will also be sending out the detailed recommendations to departments. And we are proposing to have one budget workshop that same day for any possible discussion items that we may have. But that second budget workshop on August 19th is probably really where we're going to have all of the, whatever appeals we get from the prior week. And similar to last year, we're also proposing a third budget workshop date for August 26th. That will be the latest that Commissioners Court will need to take action. Any final action that affects the tax rate, for example, including proposing a tax rate so that we can publish the necessary public notices, which do include a proposed tax rate. And then that will allow us to schedule the necessary public hearings for September 23rd, which is also the date in which the court will need to vote to adopt a budget and a tax rate. This, of course, is based on our proposed budget calendar. But if court has any questions or direction on any changes, you know, that's part of the purpose of this.
Alejandro, so August 12th is our first presentation. And April 7th and 14th is when you all are getting the request. The court get the first budget to review.
So we will compile that information as soon as we get it. And we try to get it out at some point in May, I believe, is when we'll send you a combined report that shows all of the requests broken down by, in various different formats. So that'll be the first time that you'll see it is once we have a chance to compile it all together as soon as we get it.
Not to recommend it.
No, 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 but that's just going to, that's what I was looking for. I just didn't see it.
Yes, it's just the amount of time that it'll take us to put it together, basically, to send to your offices.
Okay, very good.
That's the want list.
Yes, exactly. And on this next slide, you'll just see a few of the guidelines that we prepared. Again, really intended to help departments with their budget submissions to provide the necessary backup and backup information and data needed. So first of all, we do ask that departments provide any historical data or any type of outcome measures, really any data that shows a support for their justification. For example, departments in the past have provided trend analysis to show an increase in workload from year to year to support a new position request, as an example, or any type of analysis that shows the impact of inflation on really things like admin supplies or anything like that, just basically something that shows data supporting a departmental request, which is what departments are providing, but there's still some gaps that we're trying to fill with information being provided. Our budget application also allows departments to prioritize and really rank their requests from their highest priority down to their lowest priority, which I think is useful information for the, not only for the court to have, but also for our office to see to, if we do, to make any sort of reductions to make sure that we're looking at those lowest priorities from departments first. And when possible, we also ask that departments try and provide any cross-departmental support. We've seen a little bit of this in the past, but essentially it's any department supporting another department's request. Really intend to kind of show us the benefit for a request beyond just that department. So it may be that a request has more of a benefit than we're actually seeing to more departments besides just a department making that request. And something like that isn't always visible to our office. So that's something that needs to be communicated to us. We also ask that departments provide comparison information, basically comparing neither workload or anticipated workload, really comparison of any data against, could be similar-sized counties or cities. Departments in the past have compared information against even national standards of some kind. It really just kind of shows, it's just another tool that departments can use to help them justify their requests essentially. And we understand it's not always going to be a one-to-one comparison, of course. And we do also ask that departments take into consideration any possible cost savings when making new requests, which departments do provide this type of information. And it's not, it's not anything where we're asking departments to submit new requests. Ideas that departments have to reduce or find efficiencies really within their own department as departments are in the best position to know where. We ask that departments clearly identify any recurring expenses that are associated with one-time requests. So we have had some instances in the past in which we receive a request for one-time items, but consideration isn't always given to maybe like a maintenance agreement or a subscription of some kind that's associated with that one-time cost. And so what ends up happening is that we don't always budget the necessary amount or really grasp the full impact of that request. But it's also important for us to know really the difference between recurring costs and one-time expenses for really various different reasons for things such as maybe if we want to utilize some fund balance to balance one-time expenses, it's important for us to know that the difference between what makes up the budget. We ask that departments also. Need for a contingency so that we can ensure that we're budget. But also there may be scenarios when a department possibly wants to include some funding in their budget for something that may or may not be needed. And in instances like that, I think it might be more beneficial for us to include that type of funding in contingency so that it's not tied up in a departmental budget. Because what, once it's in there, it's a lot more difficult to transfer it out. And whenever we do our, or look at our budget to actuals for the end of the year, we do see that there are, is some room. Departmental budgets. Communicating that.
Alejandro, by any chance are you asking them to list five things they did last week?
Now, I know what you're referring to now. And lastly, we do just ask that departments, if the, if the necessary data is not provided, we will more than likely be reaching out to departments for that additional information. And that's really just to streamline the process as much as possible because once we sort of kick off the process, we really are in a tight timeline to meet several different deadlines. So we want to get to the point of whenever we present to court that we have all of the backup necessary and we're not having to go back and request it from departments once we're deep in the process.
Judge? Something I would like to really make sure we point out, and you kind of hit, you definitely hit on it that would fall in this areas, especially under considering cost-effective and savings is, you know, I know we have processes in place that we've had in place for a long time, but that doesn't mean there's not room for process improvement. And to streamline certain processes that may take a little load of work off of their employees or whatever it may have, but they need to bring those things to a great direction.